To a certain date of the 19th.
Okay, thank you. And actually, just to go a little bit out of order, welcome. I guess I saw your welcome on the city committees or the city council there. But would you like to just quickly introduce yourself? And I don't know if everybody's net, Noah.
Thank you, Chair Hancock. I'm Noah House. I'm the new community development director for the City of Kattati. I've been here about a month, but I've only attended one previous meeting of the city council due to some of the canceled meetings and vacation schedules. But I'm really excited to work with you all and the council and the community here to move some of the projects through and some of the other items that have been identified as critical to the city. Everybody on your staff is excellent, and I really enjoy meeting them all and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much. So we'll go to oral and written communications. If anybody in the public wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda, they're asked to please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agenderized for discussion. So I will open for public comment. And seeing nobody here who would like to do that, I will close public comment and move to matters at hand. So we have a request for a preliminary design review for the Village at Kattati Commons mixed-use project to allow the development of a 7.54 acre portion of the South Sonoma Business Park project with 43 residential units and approximately 26,500 square feet of commercial floor area, including all supporting ancillary elements and features, subject to full compliance with the conditions of approval and mitigation measures listed on Exhibit A for the proposed Kattati Village project. And as we haven't got a lot of public here, noticing, I guess, hasn't really worked. But what we will do is we will go through a staff presentation. And then at the end of that, end of the normal process, we will, as a committee, decide to continue it to another date. So the process is that we will hear from the staff, and then we will hear questions, and then we'll open it up for the public who should be here, including the applicant. And then we will close it and make a decision. So if everybody's happy with that.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
So we're opening up public hearing tonight. We're doing the applicant's presentation and our presentation. I suppose this is all going to happen on the 19th also.
That is correct.
Okay.
And since we haven't actually had people here, I think we should talk about whether or not we want to renotice or notice properly for the next meeting. But at the end of this, we should decide on that. So if I could ask for the staff report?
So I'm going to, while the PowerPoint's coming up, I'm going to introduce consulting planner Jim Carney. He works for M Group, who is our, they provide supplemental staff resources to the city, both on development projects and on city-initiated projects. And so Jim Carney will be here tonight and working with us on future projects. And as I mentioned, we're just waiting for his PowerPoint to come up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Noah, and the chair and members of the commission. Jim Carney has Noah introduced me. I'm going to try to just step through the highlights of the proposal, and we'll have time for questions and so forth. There is a staff report, a number of attachments to the staff report. We'll have a few slides that show the site and so forth and some of the attributes of it, some of the issues that we're addressing. And then the applicants will also be going through some similar sets, so we don't duplicate. So with that, I will proceed. Let's see if this. Okay. Just to orient where we are. The site is over on the west side, on 116 and Alder Avenue. It's actually just to the right of this star. It's on the northeast corner, and it's about seven and a half acres. Let me go to the next slide. It was part of the original South Sonoma Business Park proposal. You can see up in the upper right-hand corner here is the current Lowe's and the parking lot and so forth, and the vacant sites in between. The original project, the Kattati cottages, is already there. Forty-six units, I believe. And then the subject site is the one, just let me see if I can get oriented here with my pointer. It's 7.4 acres, and it's divided into the northern half of the site is for a subdivision of 43 units, six of which will be for four-able and duets. And I'll show a site plan for that in a minute. And on the south side of the site along 116 will be three commercial buildings. And there's a little closer view of the site, an aerial view. See, get oriented. To the left of it and on the other corner, it will be the senior assisted care project that you'll be hearing at your next planning commission meeting. So the actual subdivision, the lots are relatively small, but these are two-story homes. Most of the homes are two-story homes, a little over 1,800 square feet each, 43. And six are in duets on three. Excuse me. Let's see. There are a couple right down here in the southern part of the site, and then up in the corner are the duet units, six of them with side-by-side walls. And they're three-story units with a garage underneath. The other houses, 1,800 square feet, are two-stories, and they also have two-car garages. The commercial buildings on the south side, there are three of them, and you'll see a few here in a minute. Three, one of them is a little over six, two of them are a little over 6,000 square feet, and the middle one is about 12,000 square feet, two-story buildings. And here is an elevation for a sampling of the housing. And I think the design, really what we're looking at tonight is redoing the design review, and we'll go over that in a minute in terms of what happened in the past. Everything's been approved on the project, except we now have to go back and redo the design because it lapsed. But the units themselves are, I think they're considered kind of California Craftsman style. And my understanding is the design has not changed. I think there's a board behind you that's got some color schemes for the buildings and so forth. And the duet unit is down here in the corner, so you get a sense of that. It's actually three stories, and the height limit here is 35 feet. So, and then the other building on the lower right-hand corner is the pool building. There is that little flag lot up in the corner of the property. There's two actual parcels, and there it'll be the pool building with a recreation room, bathrooms, and as well as a pool, which will be fenced, and a open area with a walking track around it, an oval walking track. And so that actually will be shared with the cottages project as well, this little park facility. Here are the exhibits for the commercial buildings. The A and the C, which are the left and the right buildings, are primarily the same, opposite reflections of each other. And then the middle building is the larger one, and that fronts on Highway 116. As far as the general plan, the village, we're calling it the Village at Kattati Commons, generally referred to as the Village at this point. It does conform with the general plan. It's currently zoned CG. However, that zoning wasn't there when the project was approved in 2007. So it was previously approved as a vesting tentative map under prior zoning ordinances. Another shot of exactly where that star is, the middle of the site. And these are all the commercial projects, the general Gevenstein zoning district through this area. The, there have been a number of actions taken prior to tonight, back in June 2007. There was an ordinance, 799, that allowed for the rezoning from the CG to a CG PUD, Plan Unit Development. Other ordinances for the marketplace and adopting the CEQA, the Environmental Impact Report, which was actually certified back in 2001, 2002 period, and there were two amendments to that, addendums, I should say. Also, the tentative, the vesting tentative map was also approved at that time with the mitigation measures from the CEQA documents, as well as the conditions of approval. The preliminary design review was approved back at that time. However, as I said, because everything else was approved, that one lapsed over time. The map was kept alive since 2007 with annual updates, allowing them one more year of staying live, as recently as June of this year. So the conditional use permit was also approved back at that time. Let me go forward. So in terms of the preliminary design review, what we're doing now is to take a look at what was, what did happen in the past and what's currently there. But the, it's essentially, we're following a city code for commercial buildings and subdivisions over four units, which this one is. We're addressing site planning and design and other attributes of the architecture, landscaping, and so forth. Final review for the detailed landscape. This is not the final review, this is actually the preliminary review. The final review actually was changed. There used to be a design review committee, but in February this year, the city had changed that process to an administrative review. So the final review will be through that administrative review process. We will be going back to the city council for one more review here. As I said, it was approved back in 2005. There are minutes for that attached to the staff report. They had a few comments back then, as you can see in this slide. Nothing too significant in terms of what, you know, what was reviewed back then. And there were essentially no changes in the design of the buildings for this project. And so they did recommend that the project was in conformance with the city's design standards. There was a landscape plans. I'm not going to go into all the details on that one, but there are a significant amount of tree plantings around the perimeter of the residential and in some, along the back side or the north side of the buildings that create some screening between the residential and the office development there. So the project, as I said, is nearly identical to what was approved in the past. The entitlements didn't actually allow for the design review at that point. So that's why we're back here to re-entitle this design process here. The environmental review, that one goes back to 2001, when the project originally started. It was certified. There was an environmental impact report for the full South Sonoma Business Park project, which, there is a slide for that, I can share you that. But that includes the Lowe's shopping center area and the corner site at Old Redwood and 116, including this property. So that, there were two addendums to the, addenda to the EIR, which have been approved. So again, in 2007, the vesting tentative map was extended to this year, actually till next year, 2020. There were a few issues that we resolved with Caltrans in the city with some of the widening of 116, and that's actually been resolved as, as much as I can understand. I think that's the case. The mitigation measures, we addressed the cumulative impacts. And so at this point, we are, there were provisions made for making improvements in a fee program that was adopted. And so that's been agreed to by the parties, the city and the applicants, that the city will actually receive some funds to make those improvements on the approaches to the site off of 116. So in terms of the summary and staff recommendations, the land use code has identified this location as appropriate for the mixed-use residential commercial development. It was rezoned with the PUD. It complements the existing cottages project and homes to the north and the future marketplace development as that builds out to the east. The parking, additional parking was added to allow for visitors to the site. And the issues resolving the traffic at Alder and to the marketplace was, actually, that traffic goes through to the marketplace. So in terms of the actual project, we will be recommending that the design review is consistent with the South Sonoma Business Park Environmental Impact Report, including the Addenda 1 and 2, and meeting the requirements of CEQA. And approve the preliminary design review for Kattati Village, mixed-use, and so forth. With that, I could take, or staff can take questions, or you may proceed with other comments from the developers.
Is that the end of the staff report? So I'll bring it back to the planning commission for questions before I open it up to the developer or to the applicant. So Lisa.
So I just said, back when this tentative map was approved, so the enclosures for the trash, I would like to have them be big enough to have compost and recycling and garbage.
Should the commission choose to approve the project, we can absolutely add that condition.
Okay. And that's state law now?
Well, I just want to add on to that, that we should be requiring that of all developments that are mixed-use, either multifamily or commercial developments, should always have trash enclosures that can hold at least three different containers.
Do you have any questions on the current plan?
I'm trying to decide if my questions are to staff or, I think I'm going to save my questions for after the applicant.
Okay.
Jim, what is the significance of this June 13, 2020 date? Does it have to begin by then, or just what, what is that about?
Thank you. The vesting tentative map was approved this last June, and it extends one more year for that map.
So subdivisions are a two-step process. So the developer has gotten their tentative map approved, and that's been extended through 2020. They now have to record what's called the final map. And so it's similar to a design review and then a building permit, as far as if you want to think about it in the two steps. And so the developer is required to submit their final map application to the city by that date.
So restating it, what you're saying is by that date, they need to progress to the next step.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brickney?
So I'm going to raise a question. I'm not sure if this is best for staff or the developer. Please let me know. But in looking at the plans here, I did see, in addition to the pool and community center, some indications of a park, although I didn't quite understand whether or not that's something that would be developed as part of this with the developer or something that's done separately. I'm wondering if we can anticipate that what we have there now with the cottages is similar to what we can expect. I didn't see a lot of space for a park or playground. I saw a small playground there, and I'd be interested to know if that is something that we would expect to be similar, or if we could expect something more there than that.
So staff doesn't have a good exhibit to show it. The developers have brought their color and material boards, and I think they'll touch on it. But if you look at the landscape plan there in the top right corner on the board that's on the easel, you can see an additional park space that is proposed to be developed that will serve both the existing Kattati Commons and the proposed Kattati Villages.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
Is that going to be a private or public park?
There are a number of easements that are conditioned, and I am not certain on the answer to that. I'll let the developer let you know. There also is, adding to that, on the adjacent site, another park that was included in the original South Sonoma Business Park design, and that is a public park. However, that is not being developed by this application.
I did think of a question that's probably best for staff. One of our public comments that was emailed in brought up the issue of the California tiger salamander in that area. So I wanted to know if that's an issue for this development and what the current status is for this area, and how does CEQA play into that?
Thank you. And I meant to identify that we did receive two comments, written comments on this project, and they were provided to the planning commission and amended to the agenda packet. And in addition, staff received one phone call that was in support of this project. That person came in today and called to voice their support. Getting back to your question, this site, when the EIR was adopted, all mitigation for CTS and wetlands on the properties in the South Sonoma Business Park has been satisfied. And we have a summary from the project biologists regarding how that, those issues were addressed, and the developer has a copy of that, was provided to the clerk, and has been, or will be provided to the commission. Staff will also amend the agenda packet to include that analysis and summary, so that way the commission and the public has that attached to the next packet when this is brought back.
Thank you. So the question I've got is related to that, I think. It's, we're looking to find that the requested design review is consisted, consistent with the EIR report, but we haven't actually had access to that. So should we be having access?
The staff does not have a digital draft, given the timeline for when that addendum and the actual EIR itself were created. The document's available in the office, and it's available for anyone to come review. However, we will, upon hearing this concern from the commission, work to try to digitize a copy of that and provide it to the planning commission. It is worth noting that all previous bodies that have reviewed these documents did find them consistent with the EIR and addenda, and we have had a numerous supporting staff, we have a CEQA consultant review those, biologists reviewed that, multiple documents have been done updating that analysis as state law has changed. However, I can understand the concern from the chair, and we will endeavor to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Just if we have to make a finding about it, you know, I think it should actually be available on the, for the staff. So another question, when I went around this project yesterday, there was a lot of parking on the southern, on the southern side of the project. So a lot of vehicles, and it looks to me, looking at the plan, like that would all become incorporated in the new villages portion. So what is the sort of, the, I know there was a 2007 analysis looking through all of this about parking, but it does look at the moment that there needs, this is a very dense project, people are still coming in with their vehicles, you know, what is, what's the current thinking about that?
So this project is located in what's called the Plan Unit Development, so the zoning is specific to the site, and the amount of parking provided by this project meets the requirements of the code. I understand that may not address your concern, and I would just ask the developers to speak more about how Ford Lane, which is the street that kind of is between the new and the existing development, may or may not provide additional street parking.
Okay. And on a similar note, I noticed in, I guess, the DRC from 2007, and also in the notes here, talking about access, people being able to walk between the different parking zones. And again, I'm just phrasing it now, but it would be good to have that addressed by the developer when that comes up, that if there is shared parking, that is it actually accessible by foot?
It is worth noting, all of the existing development, this proposed development, and the adjacent development are all contained within cross-access and use easements, ensuring that legal public access across all of these properties is provided.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any more questions from the commission? Well, it's a, it's a big packet, so I will now open it up to the developer and invite you to come to the front. And if you could speak to the microphone, because we have it on record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tom Monahan. It's nice to be in front of you this evening. Thank you for your time on this warm August night. And thank you, staff. It's nice to see everybody again. It's been a while since we've been here. So I've been involved in the project since, oh, 1999 or so, when we first acquired this property. And just to go back a little bit, we originally had a business park planned here. Nokia was going to be the original tenant back when we had Telecom Valley. So we had designed a project at that time. That's why it was called Sonoma Business Park. And Nokia was going to be the anchor tenant. They were going to take about half a million square feet in this location, and there would be some additional housing built there. Nokia ended up not moving forward, and about 2002, we decided to change the nature of the project and to incorporate more of a mixed-use type of project, which is what ended up getting approved in 2002, where all the, the EIR was approved, all the mitigation for, which was a question that was asked earlier, all the mitigation for tiger salamander and wetlands was all done at that time. And ultimately, what ended up being approved then was the mixed-use project as a master plan community, which included the Lowe's project. It included a, just south of Lowe's, it included a shopping center, if you will, that our friends at Newman Development were going to implement. It included the cottage project, which is a 40-some-odd unit project, which was built. We built that early, a while ago. And the village project, which is the project that's before you tonight. The village project was the follow-on phase after the cottages. So the cottages were townhomes, and then the village was going to be, and is going to be what they call bungalows, and then a mixed-use office component of that. So all of these things were designed at the time, they were approved at the time, the EIR was approved at the time. We intended to continue to build one phase after another, and we were not able to do that because Caltrans Road, as part of the project, originally was going to be widened. And Caltrans took a very, very long time to approve that. By the time they approved that, the recession was upon us in 2008. So this project was approved in 2007. It came back for a refresh. The design review was approved, everything was approved. It was all found to be conforming to the EIR. And the only Achilles' heel was we had to get an approval from Caltrans to widen Highway 116 to four lanes, essentially along the frontage there. Caltrans took forever. We paid a lot of money to the city and to consultants, and that's a long story, should be told at another time. Then the recession came, and pretty much all financing came to a stop. Newman was not able to develop their shopping center, although for the same reason, because Caltrans was not approving the widening of Highway 116. So the project sat on the shelf for a very, very, very long time. Around 2014, financing started to become available again. We resurrected the project. In 2015, the city amended their general plan and included a TIF, the Transportation Impact Fee, which took the response fee, which took the responsibility to widen Highway 116 off of our shoulders as the developer and put it onto the city's shoulders as the project, that was their, became the city's project, if you will. And we were then to just contribute a defined amount of money called the TIF fee and we would contribute that money. The city would do that. And we thought, okay, now it's 2015, we're ready to go. We submitted all of our plans. We thought we would be able to start construction immediately because the project was approved by ordinance, testing tentative map was in place. The only little thing we needed was the recertification of the design review permit because the design review permit only had like a two-year shelf life on it. So we came back for a design review permit and at that time, the city said, well, hold on a second. We want you to analyze the intersection of Alder and 116, which was a, was a safety concern. And we said, oh, okay, let's go do that. Let's fix that. Let's make that safe. And again, we went back to Caltrans, this is 2015, and submitted our plans to them. They took their very long, sweet time, changed things, changed another thing. And it's taken us from, I think we submitted in 2016 to Caltrans for a, I guess what I would call a left turn lane as you're traveling eastbound coming from Sebastopol, right where Red's Recovery Room is, if we all remember where Red's Recovery Room is. So that would be a left turn lane into Alder going northbound. And that, that became another long delay. And back and forth with Caltrans with our civil engineering team, Adobe Engineering locally. And in 2017, when the fires came in, we were very close to having everything completed. And of course, half the county, you know, was involved in the fire, including Caltrans, all the engineers. No one could do anything. It just got, it got put on hold. So hopefully that answers the question, why am I here in 2019 to try and, you know, reach back in time to bring this project through the process? So we've been working with staff all during that time. The project essentially is the same project that was approved 12 years ago or 13 years ago, which was really approved as part of the master plan in 2002. So this, this vision has been around for quite a long time. We've had our hands tied and not be able to move it forward. We now hope this is our chance to move that, move that project forward. So that's a little background. I realize we may have to go through this again. I didn't realize we had a notice issue, but we're happy to be here and to answer any questions. There were a couple of good questions, which I will attempt to address if I can. Let me see if I can pull up a couple of images here. Oh, there we go. Okay, so I've got my handy dandy laser pointer and I'll go in no particular order because I don't know if I can remember all your questions, but I'll try to address them. So the question about the park, so this is a little bit of an enlargement of the park. So this is roughly about seven acres here and then this is about a half acre over here. Right now, the cottages, which we built, I want to say in 2006 or so, have a small parking, a small community building and a, and a play area right here. It was always intended that this would expand that, that recreational area. And so what's planned here is a kind of a walking area, kind of a, an open field, if you will. And then inside a fence is a pool in a small community building where that area here is intended for the private use of the cottages and, and the, sorry, the cottages and then also of the, what we call the bungalows right here. So these, both these communities are able to take advantage of that. This area here is intended to be through easements, we have to maintain it, but through easements, it's open to the public. And it was designed, we call it the triangle park a long time ago, because Newman, who owns the property over here, was going to, they own this piece of property and this and this were going to be developed kind of in tandem. And this is intended to be a green space, if you will. And so that is open to the public, that's open to the public. Lowe's is kind of right over here. And then the, the original master plan included a more retail area in that area. And so the idea is that these projects worked hand in hand with one another. The Village is what we called it. It was to be a shopping area. It was to be a residential area. And ultimately, these buildings down here were to be small neighborhood serving, commercial, potentially restaurants, different things like that. So these buildings are three commercial buildings. They're on Highway 116. The project includes all new frontage improvements along 116. We will pay our transportation impact fee and eventually, one of these days, the city may widen 116 down here, but that's not part of this project any longer. This intersection over here, it's not shown well, but traveling eastbound on, on 116, there is a, an upgrade to this intersection. There's a bus pad that gets installed here. There's a left turn lane. So if you're traveling east and turning north, there's a left turn pocket that will be included as part of this project. And then the through lanes are more functional in a way than they exist now. There's a turn pocket, so a slowdown lane as you come, sorry, as you come traveling west on 116, if you're going to turn right on Alder, there is a lane that tapers down. So this took us, I think, three or four years to get sorted out with 116. That's now, we have what's called an encroachment permit from 116, which allows us to build that. So that was the big holdup and now we think that we've cleared that. I think we've provided a copy to staff of that encroachment permit. There's a saying about things that are scarce, as scarce as hen's teeth. A Caltrans encroachment permit is as scarce as hen's teeth. It's just crazy. It takes them so long. But we've finally gone through that and so that's ready to go now. Let's see, there was a question about parking and, you know, how the parking is so, the original idea was we would build this and then move immediately onto this project. We got delayed. But in the meantime, what's happened is there's been a kind of a, an allowance of head-in parking along Ford Lane for some overflow parking for the, for the cottages folks. So right now, there is a, there is a fence there, which was meant to be a temporary fence. It's turned out to be a fence that's been there for a long time. And folks can park along this, along this lane, road, Ford Lane. And as part of the, as part of the bungalows project, there are more structured parking. You can see there's little turn pockets in there, which provide more public parking along there. There's also parking along the road here. So there's, there's quite a lot of parking in the area. As, as was mentioned earlier, the project is part of the PUD, so we defined what the parking requirements were. There's also, this is, also, we consider this to be overflow parking because these are offices and so at night, these, these spaces, there's, I don't remember, there's, you know, a hundred spaces in here. And so those are also available, you know, there's an ability to park there weekends and off hours. So we think that there's quite a lot of parking. From a landscape standpoint, there's a lot of trees. It's hard to see in this graphic, but we can enlarge this maybe and show. There's little, what they call pocket parks, little pocket areas here that are inside the project. These are, this is considered workforce housing. These, these homes here are, you know, lower density in terms of their height, they're two-story. There are six below market rate units included in the project in duplex outlet, in duplex locations throughout the project. And so those will be sold to, to qualifying purchasers at a significant discount to, to the normal market price. These are three commercial buildings. They're intended to be either restaurants or office use. They're, they're kind of open right now. We're not sure exactly what those are going to be. And those will be built, you know, along with these houses. So the idea is that this, this will all function as a, as a kind of a community. I know folks from the cottages have been very supportive of the project. When they bought their homes, they were expecting that that would follow on right along very quickly. And we've been, you know, unhappy that it's taken quite so long. Let's see, was there another question that I forgot?
Connections between the project, between the new cottages really, and the new village, I guess is what it's been called, and the overflow parking?
Okay, so the, so the overflow parking, I tried to address by indicating that there would be additional. So there's, there's parking in each unit. Each unit has a two-car parking garage and also space in front of the parking, parking garage. So there's, there's adequate space for these, for these homes. There's adequate parking spaces for, for the commercial area. So when you say overflow parking...
Well, it was referencing what you termed overflow parking, which was in the, in the, I guess really what you're talking about at the moment is in the, in the commercial area on the southern side. You said that there was over, you considered that to be overflow parking for nights and weekends for what was, for the houses to the north. And it's just, will people be able to easily walk between them?
Sure. This, this is a, there's a few oak trees that remain on the property here. There's a little oak grove and we've designed it so that we incorporate this oak grove into a little meandering path that goes along here. So it's very, very walkable in between the two projects. There's sidewalks all along both sides here. And this little oak grove kind of meanders. And then there are curb cuts, can't see them here, but there's, I think, three or four curb cuts in this area for traffic to circulate in and around this portion of the project. So as is typical of an office building on a weekend, there's generally nobody there. So that was, the idea is that it's, we didn't want to pave paradise, as they say, so we ended up having the ability to provide extra parking on weekends and at night. So there will actually be substantially more parking in the neighborhood than there is now. And this area up along Ford Ave, Ford Lane, I think, that will, right now, it's very unstructured. It's just like a gravel lot and that will become curb and gutter. And the south side improvements on Ford Lane will be included as part of this project. And then there's these little, these are just little kind of small alleyways, very similar to the way that the Village works now, the cottages work right now. Those are just kind of small, little, short meandering streets. And we've worked with the Rancho Adobe Fire Department to make sure that we have adequate turning radiuses and fire vehicular access. And all of those things have all been reviewed and approved. So we think that's going to be a great, great addition to the neighborhood.
Could you just talk about the stepped design? I mean, I think there's a benefit for the neighborhood and having some, you know, just so that people aren't looking at in each other's houses. We've had some other examples in Catati, but...
Sure. Well, I mean, starting from the, from the busy road, so we put the, we put the commercial office buildings kind of in front here. So those create kind of a little bit of a step design and a buffer. So you just have little areas in between the buildings where you're, where you're seeing primarily landscaping as you, as you drive by. So that was a nice feature. These are two-story, primarily two-story structures here. And they are, there's an image here that I might be able to call up. So this is kind of streetscape. So they're relatively narrow structures with six or seven feet in between each building. And the rhythm of the building is such that, you know, they're facing out onto the street on, on both sides. So that's, so when you say step design, this is a relatively low, low height limit. It's about the same scale as the cottages project, which I think was found to be successful and looks good. It's residential in its scale. This is the illustration of the community, the small community center that fronts in front of the swimming pool, which on this slide, if you can see it over there, is there. And then these are the duplex units here, which are three-story. They have garages below and two stories above. So these are duplex units here. So there's only, there's three buildings of that size. And then if I go forward, this is a little bit larger scale. You can see a little bit of the, this little oak park here. And it's still hard to see, but there's a little meandering path that goes through there. Sidewalks on both sides, little pocket parks within the community. Just up here, there's a big oak tree that we were able to save as part of the cottages project. And that's similar, it's surrounded by grass. It's a little, we call it a pocket park. It's small. It's got a beautiful oak tree in it. And that's very successful. And these are all meant to kind of work together to create, you know, a little bit more open space in between the project. Here you can see the outline of what that triangle park would be, you know, built by another owner. Eventually, when that gets built, that would be also part of the open space. And then, let's see, this is an enlargement of this community area. Here you can see that community building here. This is an existing community building, which is really attributable to the cottage project. And here they have a place structure. And we haven't talked to the folks at the cottages exactly about how the reciprocity will work between, but it's our thought that the cottage folks will be able to join into the swimming pool, have access to that. And it may be possible for these folks to be able to use that, that little tot, place structure that's there. And then both properties and the public are able to use this lawn area. It's going to be landscaped. Right now, it's just a, we call it an interim park. We put a fence around it and planted it with grass. So it's, it's just been able to be used as a, you know, an open, open area for the last number of years. But that'll be improved as part of the project.
I was thinking when I said the stepped, very nice, thank you for that. But in the plan arrangement that you've got shown there, you've got the three houses going down and then it steps in, in the plan.
This here?
Yeah. And moreover, on Alder Lane. So you've got this design, which, I mean, I like it. So just a bit, if you can talk about the thinking behind that and...
Okay. Well, it was so long ago, I'll have to refresh my memory. But yeah, the idea was to try and break up this, the plane line along Alder Avenue. So we put four here and then create a little break and step that back off the street. So it wasn't quite just a straight line there to the public face of that, of that public way. And then that created a rhythm where the streets kind of had a little jog in them. And then we were able to carry that all the way through. So that, instead of just having, you know, straight block subdivision, it created a little bit more interest. It allowed for a little bit more open, open areas in between certain parts of that, of that community. And then of course, keeps turning off. Of course, these units here, they, they will front right now, they will front on this, on this park. And so we were able to create the same kind of little jog in the road. But these units are very nice. They, they load into the back of the garages back here. And the front of the house is actually fronting on what we envisioned this to be a park. Had this gone according to plan, that would have been, that would have been all built at the same time and that green space would have been a very, you know, very enjoyable. Right now, it's really just kind of an open area until the Newman people get there, decide what they're going to do with their property there. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Yeah. Any other questions from...
I have kind of a, a long list, so bear with me.
Okay.
We can go one at a time, so you don't have to remember them all.
Sure.
Can you show us which streets go through from the villages to the cottage? Jis, I don't know which is plural.
Let me go back to the site plan if I can. Okay. So I don't remember the names of the streets, but this street is intended, now, I have to back up and say, the city and their general plan created the idea of putting a cul-de-sac here on Alder. It's stopping Alder from connecting to 116. Right now, it still connects to 116 and in the foreseeable future, it will. But in the city's master plan, there's a notion that this will become a cul-de-sac. And you'll be able to come south on Alder and then turn around and go back. And you won't be able to get through to 116. That happened many years after this plan was designed. When this plan was designed, the idea was that this would be a east-west road connecting into what we called the marketplace at that time. So the marketplace was the retail portion of the project. So this is a through road that goes through here. This is not a through road. It comes through and then there is a, there is like a turnaround. There's an ability for the fire department and other vehicles to turn and go south and then to come through this way. So also in the city's general plan nineteen, or 2015, they moved, or they moved the intersection, which used to be over here, to here. they moved, they moved the intersection, which used to be over here, to here. So there was a interplay between the two projects, which originally in the master plan was here. The city's general plan moved this connection to 116, this location, which more appropriately aligns it up with, forgive me, West Catati, which is kind of a, comes at an angle. And so when they studied that a little bit more, they said, hey, can you guys move this access point over to here? So the idea is that this, this becomes vehicular, and you can come up here to a T-intersection, and you can go left on our property, or ostensibly right on, to the, to the marketplace site.
But I mean the ones that are going north-south?
These here?
Yes.
These all connect?
They all connect through, both at the bottom and the top?
Correct. They're all vehicles.
Even the alley, the alleyways, what I would call the alleys, the smaller ones?
Correct. These are alleys, just like these do. These are also alley, considered alleyways. There are garages that serve off of them. There's no sidewalks on. It's just curb gutter. And you, in the cottages, if you drive through there, you'll see, you can just drive up, you know, kind of pull into your driveway, and they connect to this Ford Lane. These will also connect in here to Ford, and then, I can't remember.
Like it's Bachelor?
Could be Bachelor. But yeah, these will be, they'll function the same way as these, as these do.
Okay.
So they'll connect all the way through. Although they don't, they don't all line up. We were concerned about trying to create, you know, too much traffic. So some of them kind of don't exactly align, but they're somewhat in alignment here. This one does not align here. This one does not align. This one does not align. So this is really the only one that kind of lines up with the existing pavement there.
And then a question about parking as well. There are thirty-one dedicated guest spaces in the new development with twenty-five shared guest spaces with both developments, shared between them both. Are there any guest spaces at the cottages that the village, the village people can use?
It's all one village. No, I don't believe so. The cottages have their own guest, have primarily their own guest parking along the north side of that, the north side of Ford Lane. These are intended to be additional parking, shared, so anyone from the neighborhood can park there.
Okay.
There's also parking along Bachelor here, also along that way.
And then a follow-up question. Is there any street parking on Alder?
Yes, it's wide enough for street parking. It's, there's plenty of parking along, along the...
And is it both sides of Alder or just one side?
I think it's, well, it depends on the city standard. I think it's one side, yeah, along this east...
East side.
East side, yeah. The west side, in two weeks will be before you with the, with the senior housing project that's going to be on the, we call the Reds Recovery Room site. And that, that has its own parking and improvement plan as well.
Okay. Moving on to solar. Thirteen of the residential units are going to have solar. Are the affordable housing duets, any of those that will be having solar?
We haven't really looked at it that carefully. They're, all the houses will be plumbed for solar, meaning that you, we'll bring the infrastructure for that. Now it's, you know, photovoltaic systems are much more efficient than they were fifteen years ago. So I'm sure that people will take advantage of that.
I would suggest and appreciate if the affordable units had the solar panels installed. Those are the people that are least able to afford the soaring cost of energy, and that would probably be a great assistance to them, to be able to have that.
Sure. Yeah, that's a great idea.
I think it would be a good plus for them. Are the commercial units equipped with solar?
They are not equipped with solar. They have flat roofs on the top, so they are, in order to keep the height low, they have kind of a parapet height. Depending on the well, the roof well, you could put solar on those as well.
So would that be up to a tenant to improve, or how would that work in the future?
Well, the buildings have to conform to Title 24, which is kind of the new energy code standard. So we haven't really gotten to that stage. It may be that to meet Title 24, they may need that, green points, if you will, where, where you would put those in. The, you know, they're facing south, so it's an easy application to stack panels there. And as I said, the technology for solar is so much better than it was
Right. Yeah.
That it's...
Any, any plans for solar at the pool?
Solar water?
Solar heater?
Solar heater.
Solar.
I don't know. We can certainly look into that. Let me just look and see which way that roof is facing there. Yeah, so this is the roof here. This would be the south-facing area. So theoretically, you could put solar on this area right here.
And maybe if, even if you weren't going to provide solar, maybe have it ready to hook up to solar, so that it wouldn't be such a stretch for a homeowner's association to pay for that.
Uh huh. Sure. Good idea.
Then I have a question about the traffic impact fee. Any idea how much that's going to cost or how that's determined? Or do you just wait for the city to say, this is what you owe?
Well, in the city's ordinance, they have, they have a fee. I don't remember offhand what it is.
It's, there's a formula based on the square footage tied to both residential and commercial.
Okay. So there were some improvements that were included on 116. They're on page 122. And I wanted to know if those were separate from the TIF, or if those were included, those would be provided from the money in the TIF. And I can, I can name them for you because I wrote them down. Eastbound Gravenstein Highway, left turn lane onto Alder. Southbound Alder, right turn onto 116. Southbound Alder, left turn onto 116. Westbound 116, deceleration lane, which I don't really know what that is. Is that a right turn lane dedicated?
Slow down, yeah.
And a bus stop on 116, commercial frontage, which you said was actually in front of the Reds Recovery parcel?
Yes, it was moved. The Sonoma County Transit wanted it moved from where it was, they want a certain distance between bus stops.
Right.
And it's too close to the bus stop. So they asked us to do that.
Okay.
But I can answer your question in a general way. Some of those improvements have already been completed. In other words, when those, some of those conditions that were, that were drafted were many years ago, and some of those improvements were completed as part of the Lowe's project.
Mm.
So I would have to go through each one. So the Redwood Highway improvements have already been completed.
I think these were all Gravenstein Highway.
Okay.
So you're referencing condition number five. And so in addition to the cumulative impacts that are directly adjacent to this site or need to be addressed through widening of Gravenstein, which are handled through the TIF fee, there are a number of project-specific conditions that are required to be constructed with this project. And all of the conditions you mentioned are tied to the project development.
So the developer will pay for those?
Yes.
And what's the timing of the improvements?
So they can't pull building permits until those improvements are done, and that comes along with the answer earlier to another planning commissioners regarding the final map. That's when the actual design of those gets laid out. There's a subdivision improvement agreement that gets worked out between the city and the developer and those things. And the council has to act on certain of those elements.
Okay. That, that takes care of that one. Thank you. Sorry if you guys, for my long list.
No, no.
So have the color schemes changed? Are these back here what's current, or is that the old, or is it the same?
I believe that those were the originally submitted colors. I think they were approved long ago, and I think...
Yeah, they still, they still work.
They look good.
Amazing, huh? I just wondered. We already talked about the commercial trash enclosures. I do have a question about trash haulers, how they access the bins in the residential section. Do they go down the alleys? Do the people put their bins on those Bachelor and Ford Lane? How does that work? How do you envision that?
I think it works like it works at the cottages. Chris, the cottages write out that the...
Sorry, could you step up, just because we've got a record? Thank you.
My name's Chris, Christopher Fredmore, Lebat 78, 33, Riverport. I'm the president of the cottage HOA. The previous garbage company, we used to have them picked up in front of each house, and they did too much damage to the homes and the streets. So we changed it all, and we moved them out to Ford Lane. So in this project, these guys, I would suggest moving theirs to Bachelor, or whatever that other street is.
I think it's Bachelor.
Because we have to do no parking on Ford Lane but the trash day.
Ah.
In order to satisfy enough room for three feet in between every can on there.
And how does that work when you have no parking? Where does everyone park?
They should be parking in their garage. And we enforce that as an HOA. We find people, it's in our documents. You buy a house, sorry if you don't...
That's what you're supposed to do.
But we enforce the parking in the garage.
Okay.
So we've been trying to keep Ford Lane as clear as possible. Original plan, losing half of our parking, but we worked with Tom to rearrange Ford Lane so that we didn't lose as much in the, in the project.
Okay. That answers that. Thank you. It was a, it was a little unclear on the commercial map, how many trash enclosures there were. It looked like on one, two were identified, and then on another map, three were identified. So I wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Let's go back. Let me, let me see if I can find the enlarged version. I'm going to go to the past East Homes.
Low.
There. Okay. I believe there's three, and I think there's one around here, one here, and one over here.
Okay.
For each building.
Yeah, just wasn't clear on some drawing somewhere. Okay. I wanted to ask you about office versus retail in this, the commercial building. Are you open to retail? Is that a possibility with the design of the buildings? Is it something that can be flexible for the future?
Yes. The buildings were designed to be kind of, to serve both type of uses. And, you know, we haven't moved forward with that, obviously, yet. But there has been some interest from, there was a wine tasting group that wanted to come in. They thought that would be a nice kind of gateway towards Sebastopol. And also, the way these are designed, this, there's, this doesn't show it, but there's been a little plaza area added. This may be an older graphic, but there's a little outdoor patio on this, on each of these two buildings now. So the idea was that could work for like wine tasting. It could be a convenience store. It could be a restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah, we're open. Each of those smaller buildings now, this one and this, we call this building A, B, and C. Go figure. And we've always thought this would be a great location for kind of that type of convenience store, small deli with an outdoor area. So we've had interest on and off, but we haven't been able to do anything with any of the prospective tenants because this building is probably a little bit more suited to office because it's, it just has this plaza area on this side as well. But it's, it's a longer, thinner building, so you could, you could divide it up and have retail service uses. It has a second floor as well. So you could have retail on the ground floor and offices above. In the grand plan, we thought people might, you know, live, work, home, you know, walk across the street and have an office or shop or whatever.
That's what I was, was thinking, is that with the development of more residential and then the senior facility, that it would be nice to have possibly some retail that was walkable, that you could walk to?
Yeah. We hope so.
I did want to, for, just to let people know, I did a little research on what the current vacancy rates are, office versus retail, and industry. Industrial vacancy rates, these are based on 2017, the latest figures. Industrial vacancy rates average seven percent. This is Catati-Ronard Park area. Office vacancy space averages twenty-nine percent. Not great, you know, if you're, if you're the landlord. And retail averages six percent. So really, it seems like retail is, is more profitable for a landlord in, in this economy anyway.
Yeah.
So that's what I wanted to say about that. I got that. Oh, I wanted to know about pedestrian and bike lanes on 116. Does that even exist? Is there any kind of access for bikes or people walking to get from the development to the downtown area, to the Walgreens area?
Currently, or?
Planned.
Planned. Well, as, you know, I can't speak for what the city is doing on their master plan for 116. On our project, we'll have frontage improvements all along 116, which are intended to connect to where the, the next project will go. And that connects to the restaurant, that's, should be right about there, which connects to a, you know, to a signalized intersection. I assume that there would be a bike lane added onto 116 as 116 gets improved.
The ultimate configuration does include bike lanes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how would people access the bus line on 116 if they wanted to go towards Sonoma State, towards Petaluma, towards downtown? How do you suggest that they cross 116?
Yeah, currently, this project has been conditioned to address interim measures triggered by their development. Ultimately, as the applicant identified, I believe West Catati is proposed to be a new signalized intersection located directly between this development and the development further to the east. So that is the ultimate idea. But as of right now, it would, the interim conditions do not include any new crosswalks across 116.
Okay. It's unfortunate. I think that's just about it. Oh, one other thing, and I, you, you, I think you already answered it, because you said that the other property is owned by Newman Development?
Yes.
Because I, I spoke with someone that, that lived, used to live in the cottages, and they used to cross through the field to the parking lot in Lowe's in order to be able to walk downtown. That's what, what they did. But if you don't own that property, then I can't really ask you about that.
Well, I think people do kind of, you know, wind their way through there.
Right.
And ultimately, when that project is developed, there will be a whole network of roads interconnecting. So that was always considered in the master plan.
Mm-hmm.
It's just been paused.
It would be, it would be nice if there was some way to talk to that, that owner and temporarily make it more accessible, make it, and make it not trespassing if you were walking that way. So at least you'd have a safe way to get from the development to somewhere further south. So that concludes all my questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Whipple, former director of the planning of the Chamber of Commerce, I think. So you've got some good information there. Has anybody else got some questions for the applicant? Tom, one of them?
I have a few as well, so we'll go one by one. I just wanted some clarification on exiting Alder. I know we had discussed that there was a left and right turn lane, but if you were to exit going left onto 116, are there any traffic changes that will be made at that intersection for safety purposes, since there will be an increase in traffic?
Sure. So you're referring to this intersection?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I missed that.
Yep. So, well, let's see, traveling southbound on Alder, obviously, if you take the right and go west, that's a right turn only, easy, easy, easy turn. There's an acceleration lane as part of this Caltrans encroachment permit. There is what they call an acceleration lane, so as you pull out of... There is what they call an acceleration lane, so as you pull out of Alder, you get a chance to go a little bit faster before you join traffic. So that's part of that improvement. There's also the eastbound left turn lane that goes up into Alder, so that is improved. There will be a, like a traffic refuse lane that you pull out of through traffic, so through traffic can go by you. Right now, you're blocking traffic when you make a left turn. So those improvements will help that movement going to the north. Oops. Going to, coming out of Alder and making a left turn across, across traffic is, will be improved to the extent that that intersection is improved. There is a plan to potentially put an interim light there.
Okay.
And they call it an interim light because in the city's long-term general plan, the city envisions creating a cul-de-sac here. And so the idea is that that, that intersection is kind of like interim design where, because of the general plan, that intersection would not be fully developed. It would be intermally developed. There is a decel lane if you're coming east or west on 116. The road is going to be widened here to get out of the lane of traffic and make a right turn lane there. Most of the people, and Chris might mention this, I think on commute time, a lot of people from, I think from the cottages go up over here, come down Hellman, and down around Redwood Highway where it's, where it's a more controlled intersection.
Okay.
Just because it's safer.
And for that interim plan with the stoplight, that would be confirmed or determined at what point?
It's based on traffic. You know, we're required to post money to put that traffic signal in, and we give that money to the city, and the city decides if they want to put it in or not.
Okay.
But they don't, I don't think the Department of Public Works has determined whether they want to put it in or don't want to put it in. I think they're going to let it, see how it goes, and then if they want to, they have funds for that.
It's based on the demand.
I'd ask the staff here to actually take some notes of this and address it at the end because we need to address, there's a bigger picture that's in there. But I think it's great, the question, so if you'd like to continue with the applicant.
Uh, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Somewhat. Thank you. I think it drove us to continue the discussion, so that's great. I had a couple of questions about EV charging stations, if there would be any at the commercial space. And then also, I'm not sure with Title 24, if it is required with new residential buildings to make sure that they are built with a electrical panel that would allow for charging, vehicle charging in the garages? But those were two, two areas I was interested about EV charging.
I think at the time, there, you know, we did not have a lot of electric cars, and so I don't think that that was included in the, in the thinking at the time.
Okay. And I think that was everything. Thank you.
I'll ask you the same questions I ask everyone, Tom. I've never seen so many conditions of approval. I count 125?
Yeah, I haven't counted the latest count, but there are, there are quite a number of them.
I commend you on your patience going, grinding through this. Do you find any of those conditions egregious or complicated or?
Yeah. There are a number of them that are, that are very complex and have kind of challenged us with our financing. That was, other than the, as I mentioned earlier, the Highway 116 delay and then the recession, and now that, mixed-use projects are hard to finance because they, you know, you have your residential lenders and you have your commercial lenders. Commercial lenders don't want to have anything to do with residence. So we are trying to, once we get through this process, the next thing is for us to arrange financing. And we already know that that's going to be a challenge because of the, you know, after the recession, many lenders, many smaller lenders went away, and so you're kind of stuck with many of the larger banks, and they are, they have their own kind of buckets of programs. And if you don't fit within one of those buckets, it can be very difficult. So we may have to come back and revisit that at a later time.
Would you be prepared at the next time we discuss this to talk about some specifics that we might be able to alleviate and make more amenable for you?
Sure. I would be happy to do that. Thank you.
So I have some questions, again, coming back to that EV car plumbing. Do you see that it would be much of a problem if we actually asked all the buildings, the garages, the, to have the capability to have an electric car be plumbed in? Because you're very.
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a question of how does PG&E deal with that? I think it's a nice selling feature and amenity to be able to have that. My wife has a electric car, and we put one in. They, they were able to go off of the panel. You just need a 220 volt outlet like a, like a dryer or a range. So I don't think, I don't think that's a big deal. For the commercial spaces, we've, we've discussed it. Other projects that we've built in the interim have all included EV stations because it's a nice, it's a nice amenity. I just don't, I haven't looked into the engineering aspect of that.
Well, we did ask the previous project, the hotel, if they could do the plumbing for it on the outside spaces since you're doing the ditches.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be a reasonable request to do an actual, to put the conduits in?
Sure. I think we would be happy to do that. I, I see it a benefit to the project to be able to do it. I just don't know if, from the engineering standpoint, what kind of additional loads are put on there, but we would certainly look into that.
Yeah. I mean, I put in a 220 volt just with my solar panel. So it really is, it's down to the, I guess, the electricity, the board, that it can just carry the amps and the analysis of it. So it's very low cost to put in, in the early stages, everything goes in there. So I have some more questions, I think, for staff on some of this, but if anybody else is.
I do. So I, I know we talked a little bit about the, and Suzanne had some questions about the enclosures and everything, and I just want to put it on record again that now that it's state law, that you have to have compost, if you're having restaurants out there or bars or any other kind of, some business is going to be doing, generating compost, any four yards of cubic waste, now you have to have compost on site. So I'd like to just have that on the record. I have a question, staff, but I'll wait for that. I agree with all the comments about solar. We just did a project that we really pushed for solar on, and I think it only helps the value of the property is to have solar on that. I think that's an amenity now that is, really, to me, should be a requirement and not just something that we hope people are going to put on their, on their homes. The other question I had was, so I just want to put this on record, too, that I'm really okay with all of our conditions. I think our staff works really hard to put our conditions on, and when I get a packet, I expect that the conditions that are on there are fair and equitable to a developer. And so I just want to put that on record, and I think our staff does a great job that way. Other than that, I, I think it's a good development. I've seen it quite a few times. I'm glad you've bounced back since the recession, and I know this has been something that's ongoing, so I'm glad to see that now it's finally getting built out. So we appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the public? Thank you very much. Very good. Thank you for walking us through that.
Any other questions, I'll stand by.
Right. If anybody else from the public or the, would like to make a presentation, or ask questions, talk about the project?
My name's Christopher Fredmore, Levente 7833, Revard Court, President of County Codices. I'm also the HOA president. I bought my house brand new as part of, as they were saying, Phase Two is what we call it, the bundles, the pool and all of that was part of the initial buy-in. So we've waited since 2004 for this project, so I'm very excited to see it's getting closer. There was one thing that showed up on the map that I was a little concerned about, and it's the park, actually. This is the first I've heard that it was a public park. We have a lot of transient issues right now with people using it that aren't from the neighborhood, that leave their waste and everything else. But if it's a public park, there should be more parking available. As it stands now on that plan, I don't think it should be a public park. I think it should be residence use only. That's my personal opinion. Everything else, though, I think's great. I'd make one other comment about the master plan, and that's the cul-de-sac at Alder. I think that's not a good idea. I would keep it open in the future, but I don't see it happening anytime immediate anyways. But we did bring it up in the initial master plan reviews when that came up. But other than that, we like the project as the entire residence. I've been working with Tom Monahan and his crew since 2004 to push it forward as much as we can through the years. So we're excited to see the possibility of Reds going away and something new coming up. So, yeah. If you guys have any questions about the old, the cottages, I can answer those. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll close public comment on this, and I'd like to bring it back for staff to answer some of the questions, particularly the framework for the road. And I guess it's the 2015 general plan and the way that, first of all, looking at addressing the T-junction or making that West Qatati road a T-junction and going through, and then what might happen? What is the spacing of the traffic measures that are in there? And I'd also like to throw open, we, we may have had problems with Caltrans because of some past initiatives that were passed in Qatati that limit our traffic management capability, but is there sufficient space for future if things were to change as far as the traffic management type of devices? We use traffic lights to other devices that would perhaps keep the traffic flowing through faster, but if you could just address those planned changes and how they might work into this project or might not, is it through the TIF, is it through, I think that would help everybody.
So ultimately, Highway 116 is envisioned as being four lanes from Redwood Highway to the farther western boundary of the city, I believe. And so, as you can imagine, that's a cumulative consideration and generally couldn't be borne by one development project. Although the original EIR for the entire South Sonoma Business Park did put development and widening of 116 onto the development of that entire area, obviously, that did not occur. There were some changes in ownership and who wanted to move forward. So during the 2015 general plan update, city looked at a way to address kind of incrementally incorporating those changes into the highway. The Traffic Improvement Fund was a way, identified as a way to do that. And what that fund does is it looks at the overall improvements to 116, which include a signal at West Qatati, and then another signal on the western boundary of the Red site at a future road that's not currently there. And because of those two identified signals, Alder was proposed to be terminated at 116 and cul-de-sac. Getting back to the idea that those are incremental changes, as these projects move forward individually, there needed to be some kind of project-specific interim improvements that would allow traffic to safely flow, and those are primarily addressed through conditions of approval five through eight, but specifically number five and number eight. And so all of the project-specific requirements of this project are included in those conditions. When the Reds project comes forward, the assisted living project, some of those conditions will be the same because they are intended to address traffic impacts from either or both of those projects. So whichever one were to move forward will be required to put in some of those interim measures, and in this case, those interim may be the situation for quite a number, quite a while, until the ultimate improvements can be built to widen 116. The conditions also identify that the Traffic Improvement Fund will be based on individual projects' kind of contribution to the traffic volumes and will be collected based on engineers' estimates of the design of those improvements. So I hope that gets to some of the questions.
So for the, specifically for the Qatati, West Qatati Avenue straightening that would bring up with this project, is there a, is there either a timeframe or is there, how does it work with the TIF funds?
So the TIF funds are actually intended to cover the cost of numerous developments throughout the city, a number of which are on Highway 116, and the need for those is going to be based on individual traffic warrants at each intersection, volumes of traffic on each roadway, and the number of projects that develop along and adjacent to those planned improvements. So there's no way to forecast a timeframe today because some of it's based on as those properties develop.
So any more questions of staff?
I just have, I'm curious, and this is something, when Prue Draper was alive, she helped with naming streets. So I hear the names of these streets, and I'm a little curious, just who's naming these streets now?
When the map goes, when the map is final, they will, they will have to have the names. And actually, it's funny that you brought that up because I made a note to that myself, that I wanted to double-check to make sure that these were historic Qatati names. I don't know if they were names that showed up on the tentative map or if they are going to be the final names. But you're correct, that we use historic Qatati family names for naming our streets, and that will be done as part of the final map process. Either we'll check into these names and see if that was the case, or else we'll probably work with Historical Society to come up with other names.
I was going to say, I think that would be going, coming in, since we're going to have quite a few streets in the future being named, that I think that you should probably get together with Historical Society and try to get a list, as Prue used to have as a list of names. And just a little preference that we hardly have any names made for women in the city of Qatati, so just putting my two cents in on that.
Like Paige's daughters?
Moore Avenue has her name.
Yeah. And that could suit both people. Me first. But no, I'm just saying that Prue used to have a list. So, and that was what we kind of gauged, and so that was a nice thing. And I think Historical Society being involved in that would be something that we could, that probably needs to be done sooner than later.
To follow up on that, I did notice that in the staff report, three of those streets were misspelled. So it was McLean, Bachelor, left out the T, and what was the other one?
I hope they didn't spell Ford wrong.
Ford was correct. Let's see. Oh, Buracker. So probably not great for residential streets to have really hard spellings because nobody's ever going to get them right, and those poor people are going to have to spell them forever and ever. Probably like Rivard.
Rivard, I think he described it as.
Eichmeyer.
Eichmeyer. See, we all know Eichmeyer, so.
He lives in my neighborhood. And Eichmeyer. And Bachelor, actually, I remember that he, he was one of the early architects of downtown Qatati.
Okay.
Yeah. And Calista, no, Costelli, I saw that he was one of the early firefighters. I don't know if that's where they came from, but I recognize two names. One other correction, on the staff report, the parcel, the first parcel number is incorrect. Just wanted to point that out on page 11. It's listed as 046-286-011, and it should be 021.
So could staff please now say what it is that needs to be done, what their advice is, and what options there are?
Yeah. Before the, as identified, there was a noticing error in the preparation for this agenda item, and so staff is asking and recommending that while we are supportive of the project, the planning commission continue the item to the, I'm sorry, August 19th meeting to allow the item to be noticed properly. 19th meeting to allow the item to be noticed properly, and therefore, at that time, it is anticipated that the planning commission would take action. And in the interim, staff will look to address typos and misspellings for names in the staff report, provide some additional information on the EIR analysis and make sure that that is made available, look to ensure that trash enclosures are adequate to accommodate all requirements under state law, ask that the developer consider PV panels on the affordable units and the community building, and ensure that the electrical panels in all structures are sized to accommodate EV chargers, I'm sorry, that's specific to the residential, and then that the conduit is installed in the commercial sites to address future EV charging installations, electric vehicle charging installation.
I was partly wondering when will the residents notified of effectively this, we're doing a DRC and a planning commission combined? Did the people within the project area get notified of this?
So the mailings were done correctly. We neglected to actually post the hard copy of the agenda on the bulletin board. That's, that's the mistake, but that is a code requirement, and so therefore, we are recommending a continuance. But the mailings were all done, the agenda was online, although the information was available, however, we did not, and we posted in the newspaper. We just did not meet every technical requirement of the code, and so we are recommending a continuance.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing that I realized I left out. I was wondering from staff if there's a way in the resolution itself, and I don't know if, I guess this might have to happen after the next meeting, but there's, the term two-story office is used throughout the resolution, and I'm wondering if office could be changed to commercial.
Thank you for noting that, and it is worth noting that condition number four specifically does allow those commercial businesses or buildings to be occupied by both the uses allowed in the planned development district as well as the Gravenstein corridor zoning district with an intent to try to make it as flexible as possible for future commercial tenants of those buildings.
So we finished asking questions. We're not having discussion at all at this point. We're going to wait for the next thing, but could I have a motion to continue this to a time certain for August the 19th at 7:00 PM?
Sure, I'll make that motion to continue the meeting until August 19th.
Do I have a second, Ed?
I'll second.
Could I have a real call, please?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner McCanney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Well, thank you, everybody, for getting that. Thank you, applicant. And we will, where is the agenda now?
Reports by staff.
Okay, so we're going on to reports by staff.
Thank you also, Agent News.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Hancock, Commission. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm the new Community Development Director for the city. I'm very excited to be here, very excited to work with all of you, happy to meet with you all individually. I was able to meet with a couple of you, not everybody, so I look forward to a chance to chat with you individually and hear what your individual philosophies are and what your desires are for the commission as we, as we kind of build ourselves and our agenda. That being said, I do anticipate having a very busy fall working with you all. We've filed a grant with the state, and it is a non-competitive grant, which means essentially we will get some additional funds to look at streamlining our housing development process to try to reduce some of the, the impacts to getting housing development built. Similar to that, the city council has prioritized doing some economic development priorities and revisions to our code as well. So we will be bringing forward two kind of packages of modifications to the current zoning code to try to incentivize both appropriate commercial development as well as residential development within Qatati. And so what that will mean for the commission is some study sessions or some community workshops in addition to some review and recommendation of ordinance changes to be recommended onto the city council. And we are hoping to have a lot of that work wrapped up by December, so by the new year. So just as I mentioned, we will be busy. So please, if you have conflicts with any of our meeting schedules, planned vacations, any of those things, please let me know, and I will therefore kind of build our agendas around that, work with the chair to build our agendas around that. Along those lines, the first scheduled meeting of September falls on Labor Day. We don't have any items that are tracking to land on that day specifically, so we are recommending that we cancel that meeting, but we can decide at a later time. So if any of you have any reasons why that should not occur or cannot occur, please contact me directly. Otherwise, I will, I will work with the staff, I'm sorry, with the chair of the commission, and as of right now, we will anticipate canceling the Labor Day meeting. And then just to give you an update on the hotel, staff has been working with them to review their improvement plans. They're working to put together their final design review package, and that will be submitted through the city's new design review administration, which we are also working with Archologics, the architecture firm, who will be providing additional architectural input through that process. So that's a general update. That being said, I kind of looked at some of the more nuts and bolts issues of the planning commission, and I'd like to throw out an offer to have, you know, a CEQA 101 or a land use 101 or any type of a, kind of a public workshop or discussion with the commission and the public on any of those types of issues, housing 101 with all the recent legislation in Sacramento. If the commission's interested in any of those things, I'd be happy to hold a workshop or those types of things, those types of meetings, just for informational purposes. And then finally, I don't believe, or I'm not aware, if the planning commission has any bylaws, and so that's, that's usually something that's very helpful for kind of deciding some of the more mundane but critical elements to getting some of our decisions made. And so I will be looking to schedule a bylaw discussion, providing some draft bylaws for the commission to review and potentially adopt at a future meeting.
Got a quick question on your street lighting, mostly because I heard a KQED program that talked about lighting plans and just that the shift between the current sodium orange lights and the, the more of the whiter street lights actually gives a different type of brilliance, but the meters are still reading the same. Can you, will this include that, that there might be a reevaluation of just what are the street lighting requirements, the street lighting plan, I guess, is what it's called?
Yeah, so generally, that's managed through the Public Works Department, but I will work with them to see where we are. I'm not sure if we manage our own streetlights or if they are done by PG&E here in Qatati. So we do, staff has told me, we do, and I'm not aware of the...
We go through enough street lighting discussions and special plans and things, so...
Well, I will work with the Public Works Department to provide the commission with an update on where we are with that. I'm not aware of any now, but again, I'm relatively new, so...
Thank you. And then there is a planning commission coming up. Is the staff going to support advertising that? Or at least, there's a planning seminar at SSU that is put on, and I think in the past that has been available for members to go to. I thoroughly recommend, I've been to it.
Thank you for pointing that out. I absolutely will look to have that cost funded by the city. I will always budget that, and additional training opportunities for planning commissioners. It is a Saturday, but I'll let you know the date, and it is excellent and very, very affordable as planning conferences go.
Any, so I'll close that and ask for any reports by commissioners.
I just have one, I have just had a couple of things. I just went to symposium for, basically for zero waste in Qatati, and so especially since we were at Sonoma Village and they're just implementing so many great things out there with their new development. I would like to see us have that more of a discussion here. We do projects about what the waste stream's going to look like and what we can do to help with that with the development of these projects, whether it be an office building or a planned unit development. I think whether just to put a trash enclosure is really the minimum now. And since we're doing a lot of storm water improvements all throughout the city, I think it behooves us to start with the people that are living here to stop that stream coming down. I'd like to get the dates, if we could, of any workshops as available as soon as possible because between September and December is holidays and things like that. So whatever you're planning, if we can get the dates as soon as we can. I know some of us travel quite extensively, and so we can try to work around our schedules and, you know, planning commission's been kind of hit and miss for a while, so I think we've been fairly spoiled. And so now that it's coming back up, we're well beginning to have more meetings, it would be better for us to know sooner than later. And like I said, I think with me seeing a lot of different developments all throughout Sonoma County, I'd like to have some more discussions with workshops and things like that, that we can implement more of what I think we all see in our communities into Qatati.
Could that be combined with the land use in the sense that also with zero waste and also the discussion on reducing vehicle miles traveled when possible? So that is a...
Well, the big push right now in Sonoma County is raise zero resolutions. They're going to, the supervisors, Sebastopol just passed a zero resolution, they banned polystyrene. You're going to see a lot of these ordinances coming down the road, and it's only going to be more, you know, probably more ordinances and, and, you know, like I said, when we plan these, these projects, I think we need to plan for all the energy plus bike pass plus garbage plus having these places be zero waste as much as possible.
And I've been educated by my wife, who was also at that seminar since then, so...
Danny and I run in the same circles right now.
Any other reports by commissioners?
I don't have a report per se, but I would like to say that I would look forward to hearing more about affordable housing and how we can increase affordable housing in Qatati. So if there's some kind of workshop we can do or some kind of learning about that and how, how we could try to accomplish that in addition to the zero waste plan, I think that's something that the city council should really tackle as a group. I'm not sure why they haven't already. I like to think of Qatati as environmentally friendly, as friendly as Sebastopol, and I'd like us to consider that.
So just to throw out an idea also on that, the CEQA is an analysis, and I'm wondering whether or not, I know it's a bulky document at the moment, and there's many trade-offs that happen in there, but if that could be incorporated as part of that when we're going through a project, it seems to me that that's a place to also be looking at some of those analyses because things are connected and they're very difficult, they're very, it's a very long-term, I mean, I thoroughly support, you know, in trying to figure that out, but so whether or not that's an appropriate place, but it certainly seems to be a, it has to be incorporated as that starting point. There's been changes, I think even since this project came in, for looking at junction changes, LOS, to vehicle miles reduced, which is a very hard analysis, and I think we'll get more of it if we have like the downtown area comes up for discussion than just where that could actually do. The other area, so I haven't got any report, but one of the things that came up maybe also for a discussion is looking at this issue with shared parking and whether or not there's a way, this is just an idea that I had come up, but whether or not there's a way of a dual usage, more dual usage ideas that somewhere that might need some more parking and the aspect of the PUD sort of is trying to encourage less vehicular traffic, but there might need to be some buffer areas that could be initially done just with some low, some parking space that could maybe later on convert to a park should it stop being required or residents ask for it. So again, you know, how can we look at a dual usage, do things, perhaps bring in some of these ideas, but have a transition way of opening it up for the future decisions? So I think that's it, unless anybody else has any discussions. Thank you very much for plowing through it and for the good questions that have come up, and thank you very much. So I bring this planning commission to a close, and we will time certain next week on, got the next one. I forgot to say, if you, if we need to take a break, we usually have some cards out and can just flash a break.